Never on time. Good evening, everybody. Do you want to sit over here?
Do you want to sit here?
We don't see the screen.
You want to sit here, maybe?
Sit here so you could look at each other that way.
Where do you prefer?
Anywhere is fine.
Where you would prefer, if you'd rather face folks.
I'm gonna move. I'm gonna stand up.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. It's seven oh eight. We'll start our public session about the proposal for a village center district zone. We have two folks from the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission who are assisting us with creating a bylaw. We have Elizabeth Wood and Eli Goldman here this evening, and I'm basically gonna hand it over to them and they can explain what the proposed bylaw is about. And after that, we will accept questions, whatever discussion we'd like to have.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I know it's a nice summer evening with good weather, you should be out doing a lot of things, so thanks for coming and putting your passion in. Do I have to talk into here so that?
No.
No, it'll pick up.
It's not gonna amplify. It's just being on TV.
I know a map's going around. I don't wanna alarm everybody. This is based on a sidewalk that occurred, I believe it was last year, with Jeff Bag and Chris Ryan that were here from CMRPC. Did anybody attend that sidewalk?
Or more. It was, I think it was more than last year.
It was more than last year? Okay, so some of you were here. We don't wanna we don't wanna repeat what's already been done because this has been going on for about two years. Back in two thousand fifteen, discussions of a village center district emerged and there were multiple workshops. Eli, you wanna pull up the list of workshops that have already been held? How many of you have been to one of these workshops before? I know besides the sidewalk? No? So, okay, so we'll go over this a little bit that I don't wanna repeat what you already know, but basically, we wanna give you a brief introduction as to what a village center district is. There were DLTA funds that matched the EEA grant that came to provide money for the town to invest in doing research and developing a village center bylaw. So the funding is in place. And the goal is to potentially get a village center bylaw on the ballot for next spring, for two thousand nineteen, spring of two thousand nineteen. And in the meantime, we wanna hold plenty of workshops and do plenty of outreach and hear from all of you. Hopefully, there'll be opportunity for you to come up and speak and ask your questions because we wanna hear from you what you like, what you don't like, you know, where is the map wrong, where should the district extend or not extend, that sort of thing. We're hoping to hear all of that from you. So we do have some renderings showing you what it could look like if we do implement a village center district in town. And we were gonna, the master plan calls for this type of development. We're not trying to come in and implement something from the state. This is something that your master plan calls for. There are three goals in the master plan. Has anybody looked at the master plan? You've looked at it a little bit. Well, I'll just go over quickly. There's goal five, goal nine, and goal ten of the master plan. Talk about development that's in sync with the village center district, goal five. Calls for three areas of town, including Oakdale, Pinecroft, and Town Center to be reserved as compact mixed-use districts by encouraging small-scale commercial and residential uses and architecturally compatible buildings that reflect the existing developmental pattern. Now, when the planning board looked at this previously, it was decided not to go town-wide on this, not to do Oakdale, Pinecroft, and Town Center, just to focus only on the Town Center for now. And then if that works out and that, the waters test, then maybe think of expanding it in a later year. So, goal nine of the master plan is to help create a strong community identity. Plans should be prepared to enhance the Town Center in the vicinity of the library, gazebo, municipal buildings, public institutions, and cultural activity should be concentrated in the central location to create a strong focal point for community services and public events. Important step would be to relocate the Town Hall as near as Town Center as possible. And these are all from your master plan. I'm just reading excerpts. And the last one is a really short one. Goal ten is to revise the zoning bylaw and subdivision regulations to implement the vision of the master plan. So this is creating a bylaw is part of implementing the master plan. Now, there were if you could pull up the slide with the, all of dates. Starting in two thousand sixteen, January, there was a planning board meeting to discuss this topic. Presentations were made, discussions were had. This occurred again in May of two thousand sixteen, June of two thousand sixteen. I don't know if everybody can read in the back. July of two thousand seventeen, November of two thousand seventeen, and then we picked it up this year in May, and we had a meeting in July, and now we're here in August. So this is not a new concept. This has been going on for a long time, and we're trying to get to the point where we can actually get something on the board. Now, we looked at the comments that were made at all of these meetings in the past. There are one, two, three, four, five, six. There's about ten comments that were made that we, the CMRPC staff looked at when we were tweaking the draft bylaw to make it attuned to West Boylston. And these, this is not something we made up. This came directly from the public, obviously not this group because only one party was here for the previous workshop, but this is what people in West Boylston said they wanted in the past. They sent it, they wanted a draft ordinance to address the following. Minimize noise, lighting disturbances until abutting businesses and residential uses. They wanted it to provide buffers between abutting residential zones in the village center district. They wanted to provide adequate parking with proposed reductions due to parking sharing. They want to allow for off-site parking options. Promote safe and adequate pedestrian circulation. They did not wanna prohibit single-family housing. This was unique to West Boylston. Some towns that are working on this have prohibited single-family housing, but not, did not wanna do that here. Does not prohibit one-story buildings. That was another unique piece to West Boylston. Other towns are prohibiting one-story buildings. Provide clear examples of allowed and prohibited uses. The bylaw does that. If you look through it, you'll see allowed uses and prohibited uses. And then provides limitations on size and business uses. You'll see limits of square footages within the bylaw to prevent big-box stores from coming in. And then promotes preservation of historic aspects of the neighborhood. So all of these were comments that came, and we looked at that, and when we were drafting the bylaw, we integrated all of that into it. And Eli, you wanna we don't have a clicker. Okay, Eli's here and he's gonna help go over. We'll do it together. It's a draft bylaw and lots of bolts. Actually, is this what I just read? That's just what I just read, so we're not gonna go over that again.
And then, from there, I guess, to help some of the framing, I guess, I just wanted to include some photos and images of towns that you likely have been to and driven through and maybe can, it kinda helps make what's in here in the bylaw kinda see actually what's going on and how the different items are working together. So if you've been to Hudson, kind of their center, I know this came up at the last meeting when we were here, I think you might have mentioned Hudson even.
Yeah.
Just kinda like the mixed use, you can see that it's dense, it's compact, but not in a way that it's kind of overbearing. I know that sometimes density kinda has this connotation of big high-rises and kind of scary development, but it doesn't have to be. It often, and in this case, is exactly not that. So some other examples?
Can I just talk about that image?
Yep.
One of the ideas of village zoning is that the storefront is sort of more pedestrian-friendly than parking right in front of the store, which is what we have a lot of. That's sort of one of the themes of village zoning. I think that's important to realize and to decide if that's what you like or
Yeah, so within this incentivizes shared parking and also when applicable, enable kind of parking, exactly, not in the front of the building, but in the rear to the side of the building. So it really is pedestrian-friendly.
So the idea is that you're gonna park in one spot and visit the bank, visit the cafe, and visit the post office, do three things. That's a shared parking.
Kind of another similar example, there's a little strip kind of again in the main street. As you go through Uxbridge, that kind of is a similar, mixed use is a big component of what's going on here. Also using kind of the existing infrastructure as well, so kind of going back to the legacy and using kind of the older brick buildings. This is a shot in Worcester. So in this case, a lot of the parking is all in the street in the front, but you see a lot of adaptive reuse kind of in this neighborhood in Worcester, where kind of reclaiming the street patterns and the building facades. And then a similar shot also in Worcester on one twenty, this road kind of turns into one twenty-two eventually as per reference, but it's kind of zoomed out, but there is kind of this dense kind of little village center that's just kind of flopped right in the middle of Pleasant Street as you drive through Worcester. So just kind of imagining some of the walkability, increased walkability, and different retail opportunities that can kind of come about through some of this. So Elizabeth mentioned that we've done some renderings.
Yep, we took pictures from West Boylston and we had a planner, artist draw on top of them and render them into what it could look like if this bylaw were approved, with some of the features, so.
So just kind of as an overview, yeah, so we'll kind of start from farther out and get closer into some of the the pieces here, so hopefully, I don't know, the angle's tough to see, but just kind of lays out, really putting kind of bicycle facilities and walkabilities, put a lot of pedestrian, there's a separate bike lane. You see kind of the shared parking and that's behind the building, as well as kind of having some open green space in there as well, tucked behind the parking. Kind of from another angle, so you can kind of actually see it a little bit more.
There's public transportation allowed here too. A bus stop. And we have a green area, picnic tables at a playground, and infill development here.
This is sort of the Darby's Plaza, kind of?
Yes, yep.
Yep.
Where the bus used to go to, but it doesn't anymore.
Yep.
Well, we can bring it back, maybe.
Let's bring it back, yeah.
So, you'll see it's dense, it's mixed use. When we say dense, it's walkable. Part of the bylaw requires zero front lot line, so they can build right up to the sidewalk or right up to the lot line, wherever the lot line is, depends where the right-of-way is. And then you would have that friendly, walkable storefront. So I don't know if you recognize these from around town, but these were it's another example. You can see the assurance, bike lane there. Some different angles, isn't it?
Lots of different angles.
And then you can see that you can have outdoor areas. This could also be used for something like a farmer's market or outdoor bazaar. Craft fair. That's a closing shot of the public transit. And another bird's eye view.
The parking, maybe I guess that the parking is really kind of tucked away. It's not kind of what you see immediately from the, from the street.
But it's also already there. I mean, it's an exist, it's already, this is already kind of the situation.
But you would have a building in front.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, I don't know if the planning board wants to go through the bylaw first, or if you'd like to look at the map and decide generally what should be included, what should be excluded. You could take it two ways. Do you wanna go through the map first, or do you wanna?
Why don't we describe what it is first, and then we can show where we're proposing it be.
Okay. So as we said before, the purpose is to have a Town Center, to provide a mixed-use, walkable, bicycle-friendly area where people can go and work, they can live there. There's a residential component, and they can recreate. So the purpose of the bylaw, does everyone has a copy? Okay, so it's basically to strengthen the New England character of the town, and we listed bullet points what the purpose of the district is. There's a definitions section that details on page two, some of the uses. Now, you can add to this or take away from this. Then there's a clear use provisions, clearly stating what exactly is allowed, and then what is prohibited, and then what's allowed by a special permit. Some uses are allowed by right without a special permit, some require a special permit. And then the bylaw goes over the parking requirements. It talks about non-competing uses and competing uses, off-site parking. And then the design of the parking facilities, what would that look like? You know, most of the parking has to go in the rear. And hopefully, there's less parking, you can negotiate less parking because if someone's gonna use parking that is a daytime use, maybe an office, they might not need it at night when there's a restaurant use. So you don't need to have two spots for a compatible use such as that. And there's lots of compatible uses that are daytime and nighttime uses that you could have such a parking arrangement. Then it goes over design standards for buildings. Now, you can get more specific. One of the towns we're working with might have funding to do a design standard too, so where they get exactly what the buildings can look like, down to the dictating, changing replays, wind scoting, windows on all sides, and landscape parking and all kinds of design features that can be part of this if you wanted to. But right now, the grant that we have doesn't go as far as to do design features. I mean, so there's design standards, but you could have a whole new chapter where you get into all the architectural styles of the buildings if you want to. That's another step.
We could start in this. If people have some ideas, we could highlight something in the regular part of the bylaw instead of having a whole nother.
You could add some things in, yeah. And then signage is always a big one. What can you do for signage? So there's a whole section on that. Then a small section on site design. The details of what you need for a special permit. And then it talks about maintaining the open space in perpetuity. You really wanna make sure that if someone creates an open environment that they maintain it and don't let it go to weeds. So it's quite a long ordinance. We could go through basic concepts of it, or if there's something you pull out, maybe there's a use you like or use you don't like, something that you feel should be here. You live here and you work here. We're just going by your planning documents and by the past comments that were made. So you know this better than we do, so we hope to hear from you. Do you wanna go through more specifically the nuances of the bylaw, or do you wanna look at the map first, or do you?
Anybody have any questions so far about the intent of this or the specifics?
Yeah, I have, you know, I guess it's a real fundamental question, Miss Summer, on the line. Is the intent to encourage existing businesses to move in for this, to bring in new businesses, or what? Because you mentioned about visiting the bank, post office, and the cafe all in one go.
Yes.
Right now, you'd have to move the post office, or a bank, or a cafe to get that to work. How would you propose to accomplish this?
This is, we should've said this too. This is a long-range plan. This isn't something that's gonna happen in two or three years. It's gonna happen over several decades because one thing that you're not gonna do is require an existing landowner to change anything right now. This, anything that's existing is allowed to remain. It's grandfathered in. But when you have new development coming in, yes, we do wanna encourage new businesses in addition to the ones that are there. Expansion of current business, maybe, maybe a business could have a new component such as an outdoor eating area where they didn't have that before, something like that.
But, so this would apply for new development. So, for example,
Yes.
the lot that's opposite the lighting plant, that at one point was owned by Andy Beers, but now I understand it's owned by somebody else. The plan was to put a certain number of condos in there that were set back about four feet from the road. According to this, they'd have to have their frontages right up onto the street there. And so they'd be onto the street, and then the parking would be behind. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
So if this bylaw came into effect, all the plans for that?
I think it depends what they're doing.
Is it a redevelopment, or?
No, it's a new development.
A new development. A new development would have to follow.
It's actually, I'm just, my, maybe it's just
So there's nothing?
It's not actually a redevelopment.
Yeah, a new development would have to follow the bylaw.
But they can build single residences.
But you can build a single-family home, yes.
So under, do you allow condos? Is there mass capacity for a base?
For inns, there is, and that's up to you, what you wanna set it at. I believe it's set
At the top of?
Up to twelve rooms.
At the top of page three.
The intent is we'd like to encourage the type of businesses in the center of town that are appropriate for the center of town. We wanna prohibit a big-box store from moving in, or have a, you know, somebody comes in, knocks down a house, and puts up a car wash or something. We wanna keep that type of business away and make it appropriate for the area and encourage people to, more and more, over time.
Drive-throughs are prohibited, so.
Right, right.
So if somebody within the zone sells their house, does somebody else buy the house, or does the town buy the land and then turn it into a?
No, it's private.
Town is not buying the back.
It doesn't just become a house for, or does that?
Well, it could be a house for a while.
It could be.
It could.
Yeah, that's fine.
It could remain a house.
Are there any incentives for businesses to move in?
No.
Taxes and anything else?
Nothing like that, no. No tax incentives.
In second?
It's hoping that the design of it will encourage, the bylaw itself will encourage development.
Yeah.
Yeah, Elisa Wellington, I served on the planning board for fifteen years. And I had a number of questions when I read through this. First of all, what is the zoning of this land now that's being proposed for a village district zone?
We did a
Somewhat residential.
Some is residential.
Is any of it single-family residential? We need to go proposing a change. We need to know where we're going from.
Yes, absolutely.
It may have tried some single residences, but it wasn't, it, I'm just trying to bring up some.
So you don't have an overlay so we can compare.
Yeah, we can get one. That's a good idea. You made a really good point.
That is a good idea.
We had one when they did the walk.
We're gonna, I know when they did this.
There's a zoning map in the hallway, right? That can't be moved, I saw.
Can you bring up the GIS?
We don't have it.
Can't through this, unfortunately.
We can't.
Oh, it's just on our website.
Yeah, we'll do that for the next one.
And then I wanted to ask, this is related to the first question. How will this village district zoning increase the build-out of this land? Because when I read through it, there were an awful lot of things that I saw that would very much increase the density of this land.
Yeah, it would increase the
There's no setback required. You can go from zero to eighteen feet, but in all the cases, you could go to zero setback. In other words, the building could go right up to the property lines.
Correct.
And, you know, like in the single-family residential zoning district today, I believe it's you have a twenty-foot setback from the side lot lines.
Correct.
And I forget what it is from the front, twenty-two, I can't remember.
What side?
But, and then also
So they answered your question. Are you, is it a two-part question?
Yeah, I wanna know how it will increase the density, how much, or will the build-out be with this?
We didn't do a build-out analysis, but I can tell you it will definitely increase the
One hundred percent increase.
Yeah, it'll definitely increase the amount of density and amount of buildings.
Will be helpful to have that. Because if it's gonna be thirty times, I'm not sure I'm in favor of it. I thought this was gonna be a little village sort of concept. But to me, when you allow a fifty-foot building the size that, the height limit is fifty feet.
Yeah, that's up for discussion.
That's much higher than is allowed in the rest of the town. And for many years, we maintained on the planning board very strict adherence to thirty-five-foot height limit.
Yeah.
And so this is a big change, and I'm not sure that change is consistent with your goals because to me, that's, that's not like a little village district. We have fifty-foot tall buildings.
The height might
The height is up for discussion. That was, that's up there as a benchmark.
Okay, well, I would be very much against that. I think it will destroy the small-town feeling that we're trying to preserve. I'd go back to thirty-five.
And I think that the pictures that were shown of Uxbridge and most, particularly Hudson, I mean, we're not Hudson.
Yeah, right.
And we're not, and we're not going to be Hudson.
We don't have those old historic bridges.
Yes, we don't, so.
So let's not go up within the height that much.
No, I think the height is reasonable.
So that was
We can change that.
Yeah.
No, thirty-four. I think it should be the same as everywhere else. For one thing, the fire department handles it right now, and they can continue and handle it instead of having to try and deal with fifty feet.
So page seven. Is thirty-five feet the consensus?
I believe that's what the rest of the town has for how you want it.
I think, I think it's, it might even be thirty feet at the Yves or something like that.
I can't remember.
Yeah, I think it's thirty feet at the Yves.
That's a, that's a good point. That's a good point.
You can check it.
Yeah.
How many stories would that be?
Three.
That would be three stories. The proposal is four and a half stories, I see that. And my other thought was allowing the building to be ten thousand square feet, that's no little shop. That's a quarter of an acre. So that seems pretty big to me for that part of town.
Is that what, how big that plaza was? Was that like that?
Which was?
The one that we did the rendering of? Was that about a ten-thousand-foot?
The one, the one-story building.
Yeah, I didn't get a square footage on it.
I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if that's open here. Hundred by ten.
Yeah.
So just wondering the offsets.
Depends, yeah.
Is there, is there ways to incentivize people to do either walk-through shops? Cause the parking's in the back, the offset would be zero. So is there a minimum sidewalk distance that has to maintain that kind?
Sidewalk is part of the right-of-way.
So is there a minimum, a ten-foot right-of-way, I think it was, or is that?
It varies throughout town.
So there's no minimum? Okay, that's interesting. It seems like for the nice towns that you don't do the walk and have bikes and have, you know, the trash bin and the tree and whatever, right? So that's one thing. If you can park behind, are you gonna encourage the businesses to have walk-throughs? Like, so you can walk in the back of the building as well as the front?
If we did design standards, then you could integrate that in.
So we don't have that, though?
But we didn't have that at this point. We're not there.
I think someplace it refers to a second entrance.
I mean, if a business has the parking behind it, it only makes sense for people to be able to get in near the parking.
Yes. Right. Yes.
Prohibited that, though. It depends on the layout.
Oh, right, right.
Can you make your own design? How we make our own design, how we want this to look?
You can add, if you look through the design standards and the site designs, if you have design elements that you'd like to include, we can do that. But if the town does wanna take it a step further and do design standards, that's a whole, that's a whole chapter that you could open up to your design.
But why can't we keep it the way it is and just make the little changes that will make it a village that people can, who got passing getter and walk down the streets and do the bicycle rides and stop at the cafes and go into the galleries? Why can't we just do, like, the library's there, okay, and then you have the gallery, and you have the studio, and then you have, you know, houses, and then you have, you know, dabbies down the road and so forth. But why can't we design our own, how we want it to look, within, within the limits of you guys, of what we can do? You know, how it can look, if we can be like
Well, that's sort of what the, that's sort of the idea behind our big picture, is to just allow people to be able to develop a business in these areas. And some of those areas already allow people to develop a business. I mean, they are developing a business.
Right. Right.
What we're trying to do is just promote sort of the fact that we want this to happen, we want it to be pedestrian-friendly. We don't really, I mean, we don't really wanna, you know, build anything really drastically different than what we're doing. What we want is to promote what's happening and keep it going, unless there's something we don't like. If there's something going on that we don't like, we could.
Add to, should we want to add to it?
Yeah, uh, it was something that we, we wanna change, but it's, like, like was said, this is sort of a long-term project. We're not saying tomorrow we're gonna put the zoning in, the next day we're gonna dig everything up and build McDonald's or something.
Sometimes we talk about, it takes like.
Generations.
I'll say that, I'd like to see it.
Well.
I mean, I'd like to kinda see this, I'd like to walk down there and ride a bike down there or whatever. I mean, sometimes we talk about.
In order to have a, a big development quickly, I know, I mean, there's one town in New Hampshire that's doing it, um, London area. Has anybody heard on NPR about the building that did it downtown from scratch? They had an apple orchard that they had, they had the luxury that we don't have here. And, and they, they had one property owner with a big parcel land and one private developer coming in and enveloping it downtown. We don't have that, we have multiple parcels, multiple property owners. And when you have that, the dynamic of it politically and legally, you can't, you can't come in and with the.
Tell people what to do.
Tell people what to do, you can't do that.
Right, but if you're there already and you wanna do it, you do it.
Yeah.
Also there's, also there's some parcels that, you know, are ready for development. The, uh, the lot where Cumberland Farms thankfully was driven out of town and they built their store elsewhere. That was, uh, inappropriate use for that lot. But there's a house there and it's for sale. And there's some wooded property then on, on West Boylston Street, uh, between Honey Farms and the gas station. So these are all possibilities to be developed. And so the, one of the goals here is to promote the kind of development that is in, in sync with what we want and the rest of the village. Instead of having a huge Cumberland Farms with lights and music playing and whatever else they were proposing.
Well, the thing too, there's a lot of people in this town that are, that have a lot of odd ability. And they have a lot of ideas and they know how to do these things and so forth, so, you know, it's.
And so are you concerned about the way the buildings look, the architectural features of the buildings or?
No, I think the, I think the buildings look great.
I mean, the new, a, a new building, a new building, for example.
Yeah.
Because what Elizabeth is saying is that that is not really covered in detail in the zoning bylaw. And that some towns did the extra work to insist that a building looks like it was built in eighteen hundred. Or looks like it was built at a certain time and, you know.
If the town decide, if we decided to, to dictate the, the owners how their buildings would look, what would be involved in that?
You mean existing buildings or new buildings?
Well, we're not gonna dictate, you know, like, uh, I think well.
Yeah, you've come up with design standards, you've helped wo- public workshops do outreach.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be a what, a two-year process and a thousand bucks or something? If you don't even, I'm just trying to figure out if you can get there.
You said you had somebody, they've gone to grant to do it?
Yeah, well, they're working on getting a grant, they don't have it yet.
Yeah.
Auburn is trying to get one, um.
And where do they wanna do that?
They're, they're already to the point where they have their draft bylaw ready to go to.
Really?
Yeah, um, and they, they started five months ago.
Wow.
Yeah.
Where abouts in Auburn?
Um, the Drury Square, it's called the Drury Square area.
It already is, it already is like this in, in Auburn. Isn't it already like that in Auburn?
Not exactly.
Sure.
Not exactly.
Close to the sidewalks and.
A few are, but not, but they went up, up. You know, Auburn.
I mean, they got that big street going through.
Would this change the current zoning in that area to this?
Yes.
The people would not have a choice, they would have to build them like this?
No, well, in, in general, the, the borderline of this district is up for discussion. But yes, it's not an overly district, it would be a new, it would be a separate district.
So there wouldn't be an option for the person, they would have to do it the way that it's owned.
Well, but a single-residence house is still allowed, they don't have to change it.
If they wanted to put a business, they would have to.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the goal to change anybody's use of their current property.
Say new, new, new building.
A new building.
Somebody come in, they would have to go.
Yes, right.
Right, and that's, that's sort of the point, you know, that we're trying to get everybody to, if, if somebody were, didn't have to do that. They might sort of be a, a, a little wonk in this village zoning, they put a, I don't know, something weird in there that doesn't have a sidewalk, I don't know. You know, I mean, that's why they put the zoning in place, you know? But I think that the, the other point was that over the generations, this allows somebody who's got a giant house there and wants to keep living there on the second floor. But they wanna do, I don't know, dentist offices up on the first floor. This allows somebody to stay in town and to, to generate some income or, or make use of their two thousand square foot house that they don't really need. Two thousand square feet of for themselves, you know, or three thousand.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of that's being done already.
Yeah, and, oh, the other half.
The sidewalks are beautiful, the sidewalks, they did a beautiful job, the sidewalks.
Right, right, and so, don't keep them, you know.
Yeah, oh no, they really look nice.
The, the other thing that we, that came from the walk was that you were saying that, that this area, it was, it's gonna change zoning. Really what's going on here that we noticed is this is already kinda going on in this whole area. And one of the, one of the things we wanna take advantage of when we do this is to sort of actually zone what is going on. Like, like right now, like where the post office is.
Yeah.
The zoning kinda cuts the post office in half and, you know, just where the zoning line is right now, you know? And there's some other places, and we're just sort of trying to line them up with the edges of properties and, and, and sort of capture what is really happening already. You know, and, and sort of promote it, I mean, if, we're not really reinventing what's going on.
Right.
It's already happening halfway, like you said, library, the, the art studio, derbies, you know.
Well, you're making it more conducive for businesses to wanna come in and do a property.
And 'cause they know that it's promoted, I mean.
Right, 'cause it's promoted, and it can be done.
Yeah.
They'll be able to open a, a caf- cafe or whatever they wanna open.
Right.
Yeah, good.
I mean.
How, and this is happening all over, um, central Massachusetts, there's six different towns right now that are working on a similar, uh, concept. Trying to get a town center, trying to get a pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use, bicycle-friendly environment.
Well, you know, in Italy and all European, if you, if you watch Channel Two, they've got passenger jetters. And every Sunday they close the, the main area and people walk. They get out and walk, they have gelatos, they look at ice, they have cafes, they try.
They do it in Boston, I mean, they closed like Memorial Drive.
Whoa.
In the summer, 'cause the population goes from forty thousand to over a hundred thousand, so they close off the whole thing and you, you can't use any cars. You either walk or you use a bicycle.
Right.
And that's only during the summer, during the winter when the population's back to normal, then it's wide open.
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, excuse I'm.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm John Schlichting, I live on Central Street. And I'm very much in favor of this consideration.
Yeah.
Particularly for Central Street, wouldn't mind if it was somewhere else. The beauty that I see of this is that it allows existing houses, residences, businesses to continue. And at the same time, it allows multi-use consideration within this new village-centered zone. On Central Street, there, I'm sort of right in the middle. And I've got businesses on my side of the street before me, I've got businesses after, I've got businesses across the street. I've got houses across the street. And if anybody wanted to develop something like this on their own, they have to all individually. Go to the zoning board and ask for a variance. Whereas if this is set up, it would allow flexibility in the multiple use. That would be conducive to this being, and, and advantage to the whole town.
Right.
Certainly we have bicyclists that go by all the time, um, on their way to the rail trail and so forth, getting their exercises. But if we had more bike stands around periodically, that would be great. It would encourage more walkers, more bikers.
We'll have some bike stands.
I just think that, uh, it has pluses without the drawbacks. It's not saying people have to change their residences. It's saying if you would like, this is a conducive plan for our town to make it better for everybody.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think you were talking about, um, things going on in town. I think that the one thing that, um, is going on that it would impact, first thing, is there's, there was a, there's a residence and somebody wanted a, uh, occupation in their residence.
Yes.
Right now they go get a permit for that, in this area.
That's right next to me, and I could've done it, and if, if, 'cause I have a photography interest and so forth. But in order to do that, I would've had to send out mailers to like three hundred people, then I would've had to go to the zoning board.
Yeah.
And that would've had to happen for every single person.
Whereas if this zone was set up, it would have the flexibility.
So it turns that to an as-of-right for the people in this area.
Instead of saying, you know, you have to do this, or you, you know, it's not gonna eliminate the residences, it, it's just gonna increase possibility. And we do have, uh, certainly additional land that could be utilized somewhat differently for parking. And I know, uh, some of that has already been addressed near the, the library, but we have the church. We, that, that's already for some people, a walking area. I mean, one of the reasons we moved to West Boylston and talked with our friends is we could say, okay, from where we are. We can walk to the bakery, we can walk to exercise, we can go to the tennis courts, we can go to the, the playground. If we want, we can go to church, we can go to Walmart, it's not too far, it's good exercise if we wanted to. And at the end, we can go to the funeral home.
I don't think, I don't think they make you walk there. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Joanne Sessler and I live at seventeen Newton Street. I think it sounds lovely, I think a historical district in town is absolutely in keeping. Newton Street is a kind of a special place. Uh, anybody that's lived in town forever knows that those houses there have been there for a hundred years or so. I looked at the map and I looked at my house and I'm trying to envision a building that's zero feet in sidewalk. Across the street for me. And that's kind of daunting because that, if I think of any historic street in town. I think Newton Street is it. And there's that big, huge, open area that belongs to, um, the Adams. That used to be the Snows. And that lovely sidewalk so that they can increase in parking because they have a ton of town traffic, which is lovely. You sit on the front porch, people go by, everybody talks to everybody. Everything about the entire plan sounds wonderful until I think of that big lot. And then I think of a building that can be thirty-five feet tall, that's sitting on the sidewalk. And I can go behind it and park my car. But.
One street.
It's still gonna change that street. And, and that one little aspect is bothersome to me because I think Newton Street is. It's a street everybody loves to, to be near because we all go to the library and it's the walking route. People walk around the block and they say, that's my route, and you get to see the same people all the time, which is lovely. But when you talk about more congested and on the sidewalk, that's bothersome to me as someone who lives across the street.
That's true, I mean, we don't have any examples in town on, right on the street.
Right.
Tony Miolemaln Street, um, I was concerned about the infrastructure. You said sidewalks, which is good, on a bicycle lane, uh, that sounds great, but who's gonna pay for the infrastructure? If you put a bike lane, these roads are gonna be narrower, so I don't know if that will be up to code or not. Would they have to widen the roads and who's gonna pay for the widening of the roads if you put a bike lane in? And where's the, where's this money gonna come from to change that infrastructure?
I think, you know, we are, the town is working on, uh, complete state policy. We did get some money.
All right, save, save the.
I'm, I'm not saying, you know, we are getting the money right now.
Say, say you got an appropriate, say you got a million-dollar grant and to change the infrastructure of the roads is one and a half million dollars.
The complete state.
Have five hundred thousand dollars to put into that to make it right? So what happens?
Definitely done.
Stalls, right?
The complete state policy, you know, they gave us like a, like last time, last year, you know, we got like two hundred thousand. That's for, only for the sidewalks.
Did the town put any money in?
No, we don't put any money in.
So what I'm saying is, on paper it sounds great, but for infrastructure, to, to make this work, say it costs four hundred thousand. The state gives you two hundred thousand, where's the other two hundred thousand gonna come from?
We're not, we're not, I mean, this is zoning.
We're talking about zoning, so I think what we're gonna do is require everybody who makes a new development to have a sidewalk. And that's sort of where it's gonna happen, 'cause we're not gonna have. Well, we were talking about a bike lane, but that's just, we're not gonna put in wider streets, we're not gonna take people's front five feet of their property or anything like that. And put in a bike lane.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're presenting that tonight, we'll put a bike lane in, it sounds inviting, right? It sounds great, right, everybody's on bikes, so we'll put a bike lane in, that sounds ideal, right? What I'm saying, on the other end of the spectrum, where's the Jinga's Auto gonna come from, the paper?
The bike, the bike lane is not part of zoning. And we also have another project which we're working on to improve the traffic flow and deal with all the roads. And that deals with the walkability aspect of this.
Okay.
Uh, the intersection in the center of town is not particularly pedestrian-friendly, it's not car-friendly sometimes either. We're, we're trying to work on that also.
No, that was just a concern of mine.
And so that, so a bike lane would be more involved in that project if we're gonna reconfigure or change the roads or change the traffic signal or whatever. That's not, that's necessarily attached to, it's not attached to the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
But that's sort of a desire and the type of environment that we would like.
So you'll get to that point eventually, get the zoning first, right?
Eventually, yeah.
Yeah, you could, you could dial if it is funded, those are about the transportation improvement programs.
I, I, I think all you'd see out of this is maybe a bike rack.
Bike rack, there you go.
Like, the people who are developing their property and they want bike, bike people to come, they can't put a bike lane in, in, in forty feet of frontage. But they can put a bike rack that encourages people to do it and, I, I mean, I think that's all you're gonna see out of this.
So, in the back. Quick zoning question, um, to that effect, I don't, I don't really answer, but, um, are we gonna allow residential above commercial?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that encouraged?
Yes.
Is that kind of the definition?
Yes, that's part, that's part of the.
Wall fam, it's an interesting mix, I don't know, I've used to hear people's opinions and, you know, that seems, in my opinion, be, uh, kinda harsh.
It's, it's harsh?
Yeah, I don't know, you know, Wall fam had.
Well, Wall fam's huge, apparently. And we're not Wall fam either, but I, but I understand, yeah, that is what you're saying, yeah. Doctor? Yeah.
I'm Dr. Robert Tashjin, and I'm a real lover of the town and very concerned about the town. And the future of the town. This town is at a crossroads. And what we do now is gonna pack on it for generations to come. So I'd like, I'm gonna give you this document. There's a lot going on in this town as far as costs and projects and so forth that have to be made public. And I'm going to put a motion in to the town meeting to go on the warrant and explain some of this.
Is this related, is this related to the district zoning?
Now, let me explain this. This district level. When I speak of a lawsuit, it involves this, first of all, it's the veterinary hospital in this, at Twenty-Nine Prospect Street. That's in a major lawsuit. Now, over a year ago, when all of this undercover was going on in this town. I filed a lawsuit in federal district court, Worcester. It was filed and identified by the judge as RICO, racketeering, influence, corrupt organization. Within the town of West Boylston. Now, that comes up to you. Now, that led to a lot of problems that went to the appellate court. And it's in three state courts, I'll give you this document, you can see for yourself. Now, the case is to the point that it can go to the US Supreme Court. This is that complicated a case.
Okay, but how is this related to this village-centered district?
I think the village center is a big mistake, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
First of all, you've gotta consider the future, the water, the water in the town. You take everything for granted. The DCR owns a lot of property in town. West Boylston over the past four years is totally covered up. West Boylston over the past forty years is totally covered up on the, down Route twelve. Swamps, wetlands. Our only water source now is up on Prospect Street. And that's being hampered with. Now, and then a lot of the property on Prospect Street is, including the botulism problems, which, which the town is aware of, is water is affected. Now, on this land, let's take this land.
Sir.
Let's say, I'm gonna take the land, you know, you always like to turn me off.
No, you're not speaking about the Village District.
Yeah, I'm still speaking about it. I'm telling you, this land.
Talking about water on Prospect Street.
All right, this land drains right down into the reservoir, clearly. Darby's was a swamp, they got that through somehow. What is the drainage? It goes right down. The Prospect Street, the veterinary hospital, what I went through to get that approved before the sewers, and the sewers are not gonna be the answer to this. The whole parking lot has, this could be potentially contaminated. It required all kinds of a, of a leaching field throughout the whole parking lot. So we have to consider the water. If you don't wanna consider it, don't. But I'm gonna give this to you, you better read it.
Okay.
And, and you've got to also understand, this town is gonna stop covering up. When you read this, I don't know if you people know, I'm up against, the town has got three law, lawyer, law firms against me. Three, three of them.
Doctor.
Including, including Dr. McGrath and the veterinary hospital.
Okay.
And it's all under, under, uh, secret meetings. They don't even tell you what they're doing.
Can you, can you wrap up, please, so we have other people who wanna speak?
Yeah, you'll have to touch and cut me off.
No, you're not asking, but you're, you're going way, yes, but you're going off topic. You're going off topic.
Well, you'll find out because it's, it's in the lawsuit.
Okay.
And the truth is gonna come out of this.
Okay.
And don't bluff, don't bluff these people.
I'm not bluffing, no.
Because you've got water, drainage, and many other factors to consider. You can't just build that way.
I understand. And I wanna hear it from everyone here tonight, so, so thank you, sir.
Liam Stefanci, uh, from Lancaster Street. I have just a little technical question. The north of this map, I assume that DCR owns some land? Where is the, or maybe not, but is some of the land in the north of DCR?
By the reservoir, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, how mu, I don't know how much the DCR owns in, near the center of town.
Well, it would, it looks like it would almost border on your area. It depends on, is it aligned with trees?
I think the DCR is on the other side of the train track.
The tracks, yeah. I mean, the zoning, the zoning borders the tracks there.
I don't think that's the DCR. Okay, so Vincent McNally was here, he would have told us something.
No, so, so they're not, they're not overlapping where you are interested in. But there, there are boundaries to the north. You couldn't go further down.
That's correct, that's correct.
Cannot go into DCR.
And it, and it has to be developed by the owner. I mean, if DCR owns it already, they're probably not gonna do any building.
Then I couldn't develop it.
Not gonna develop it, yeah.
You know, we won't call it as a village zone.
Um, this is a similar question to my first one. Can you project how much of an increase in traffic will result from this rezoning? And what I'm thinking of is Central Street and then Crescent Street. We get a lot of traffic on that road, but it's, um, I don't think that's a state road, is it? Uh, Central Street?
No.
And so it's much narrower than Route twelve. I can see Route twelve, which is included in this new zoning, could probably accommodate an increase in traffic. But I'm worried about Central Street and Crescent Street. And because right now, it's awful to get out of Darby's Bakery when it's commuter traffic.
I understand, I understand, in the morning, yeah.
Down at the traffic light where Foods twelve and one forty intersect, it, now that's up way past the railroad tracks. When it's a red light there. Because I take my husband into Boston all the time for medical treatments. And it's a two hour trip coming home now.
Part of, the, part of the reason that happened was they repaved the pavement in the center of town and the sensors were not, were disconnected for some period of time, a few months. So that, that is what caused a lot of the backups way past the railroad tracks because it was on a timer rather than being sensed by the, they put those back, right?
The scripts, yeah.
The sensors, the sensors are back, which makes the, which makes the flow much better. But it's a very good question, and I think nothing here, if this passes, nothing's gonna happen immediately. It's gonna be a slow, it's gonna be a slow change. We're not asking for big developments to be, be put up. In fact, it's the opposite. We're trying to prevent big, big developments from happening in a center of town. So, but that's a good question about the traffic.
Can I just add one thing? I noticed one of the permitted uses in this new district is taverns. Is that a bar? And so you have kids walking home from school on Crescent Street and Central Street going by a bar?
Well, the parents have to wait someplace.
Well, that's.
How about marijuana? Do you have that in the town?
Too close to the school.
Too close to the school. Um, it, it's a good question. And if we, and if the town felt that a bar or a tavern or a saloon, if you will, is not appropriate for that part of, you know, for that district, that's, okay.
Because it's too close to residential.
Okay, but you may have a restaurant or a cafe that serves, serves beverages, which is not, which is not a, a bar. Yes, I'm sorry, in the back?
Yeah, so, um, for the zoning thing, are you considering like on the, like the district for like speed limit for the whole zoning thing? Because one thing they don't take the kids on the street because the car was like flying by and stuff and.
The zoning wouldn't affect, uh, speed limits.
No.
Those are set, those are set.
That would be a, a secondary, that would be, you have to do a traffic study. And, um, that would be a whole, that would be another project.
Yeah, because you can't, you can't arbitrarily change speed limits without, uh, without an official traffic study.
Do we have, I know this is not zoning, but do we have like a third year plan for the roads here? I'm making a vision, thirty years from now, rotary and some kind of planning process.
This, that, that, that topic will be coming up, uh, in the next, next while. Because we have, uh, some possibility of, of state funding. It wouldn't happen anytime in the next couple of years, but the planning for that needs to happen soon. And that will be, absolutely be a topic. And there'll be a number of public forums about what do you like, what do you not like about the traffic in the center of town? As the whole triangle we're talking about, from twelve and one forty now to Franklin Street. Uh, the object is to, uh, reduce the number of accidents and make traffic flow better. And that, that will be discussed very, very much in the next, next six months to a year. Yes, sir.
I was just gonna add that in terms of this Village Center District having expanded multi-use, that does not do away with the fact that businesses coming in, depending on, if it was a cabin, they would still have to separately go and get their separate licenses and so.
Oh, yes, yes.
So the town would be involved in saying, yes, we did say cabins were allowed, however.
It would depend on the size of the business and the traffic and all that, yes, that would, yeah. That's a whole separate permitting process, Chris.
Well, we, we think that the roadwork and things like that have to be done. Once someone builds right on the road, it's never gonna be any way to make the road bigger.
I hear you.
Once, you know, once one of these are built, that, that whole street now is gonna be, that's gonna be the end of that street. We can't make it bigger because we can't go.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a good point. If you, if you take the White House that's vacant now, where Cumberland Farms wanted to go. And that's, that's very close to the intersection. And that's eligible for perhaps widening if we decided that that's what was needed right in the center of town. So it's a good, that's a good point.
Should, wouldn't, wouldn't that force traffic away from the center of town? And up secondary roads like Newton Street, which my neighbor already pointed out is very.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it encourage traffic, these narrower streets, to go on, avoid this part of town? And then we just push them onto the residential streets?
Right, and that's not, and that's not, that's not a good thing either, is what you're saying. Yeah, I, I agree with you.
And there's already, there's already plenty of traffic on Franklin Street, Newton Street, the non-central streets. Because everyone's using their GPS as a cut through hole or whatever.
Right, right.
I mean, you know, it's that.
There's nothing, I mean, streets like Franklin, Newton, they're, they're through streets. You take Newton up to Goodell or whatever, that's, yeah, that's.
I'm sensing a sort of a strong feeling, sort of a concern about the frontage.
Yes.
Zero feet frontage, or not frontage, setback.
Yeah.
Should, should we, should we add ten feet or, or put something in there?
Address those concerns.
It seems like there's a pretty strong concern there, you know? I don't know how we can work that, you know?
You can change it if you want.
No, I know we can change it, but in, in the future of village zoning in the area, I mean, it seems, I, I don't wanna put words in people's mouths, but it seems like as a town, we like sort of that front greenery. You know, like a little bit of yards or something like that.
Yeah.
As the character of the town, not so much the, like the Hudson picture, which is, you know, people write on the street.
So why can't you just see the sidewalk?
It certainly can, that's the point of today.
Yeah, you can just build the buildings behind with sidewalks.
Right.
I think that's perfect.
So when you look at the Hudson and the upstretches, the road is already widened up.
Pretty good, yes.
It already has sidewalks, it already has bike lanes.
Yes.
And then they started, we're starting here and adding buildings on the side of it.
Well, potentially.
We can never expand the roads in the future.
So, I mean, you want like a fifteen foot required setback or something? So that's the closest people will build and then we, and we define the, the road.
Then if the road gets wider, we take it away?
And you can say the right of way of the road is, is such and such, and you have to be fifteen feet off of that. Because, because we could define the road as, because sometimes they're wishy-washy. If we say it's supposed to be a thirty foot road.
We should leave enough space for possible expansion of a road in case there's an extra lane.
Well, we would define the right of way.
Yes, on the back.
Just off the thing about, right, I'm thinking of a particular place in Needham Mass, right? It's, uh, it's in front of Pizza Needham, I don't know. But what they did is they made the sidewalk extra wide and they didn't use it right away. But what they did is they actually made the bike lane on the sidewalk. And it's, yeah, and so the, it was all vacant and that's, that's the place where everyone walks. So it's like, I mean, you know, it seems simple, you don't have to use it right away, maybe fifteen, twenty feet, whatever it is, but then it will fill in, you know?
Right, well, I mean, and, and like the cafe might put some tables out or something, I mean, if it's fifteen feet, it's one side of the thing.
Fifty, yes. Fifty, yes, I like fifty.
Fifty tables.
We know that something is gonna end up being there.
Yeah.
And I just want it to be lovely and not detract from the neighborhood.
Right, no.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're hearing the concern and that's.
And a bunch of umbrella tables on the lawn would be fine, but I don't want a building right on the edge.
No, I think that that's, that's gonna throw loud and clear from everybody, not just you, so.
Thanks, oh, yeah.
Yes.
I like.
Yes, sir.
I like your idea about like reconsidering the setback, whether it be ten or fifteen feet. And you could have that for like a permanent structure. However, you could still reword, uh, zoning, the, the bylaw thing saying, however.
You could use.
Temporary things can be approved separately, such as tables and chairs and stuff.
Which is outside, but not, not anything permanent.
The setback would apply to the structures, I mean, that's what it talks about, yes.
While we're talking about setback, um, I saw it here somewhere, I haven't been able to re-find it, about a buffer zone between existing residential districts and this. And, but also, as I was looking for it, I saw there's zero setback, uh, all the way around. So if, like my neighbor, you're in the bottom to this district, you could have some, somebody build right up to the property line. I mean, perhaps.
Side yard too.
Sorry?
Side yard, not just front setback, but a side.
Yeah, it says there's no setback on any side, uh, on any, uh, on any property line. And I think, I think it might be prudent to say, put in, if it's, if it isn't contiguous with the Village District, if it's then going into a residential district, there has to be a certain setback. You'll have the re.
Yeah, you mentioned the buffer, uh, around the district. How is that, that seems in conflict with a zero setback. If you had a, if you had a lot on the border, how, you, you wouldn't, if you're required to, to provide a buffer, that conflicts with a zero setback.
That would be around the edge.
Yes.
Around the edge, yes, around the edge.
But not within.
Yes, that's correct. So what he's saying is a zero setback conflicts with the need to have a buffer on the edge.
And I'm also, I'll also address my neighbor's.
Take, right, take for example, because she's.
Right here.
Yeah, take her, like right here.
Yeah, well, we're at a butts, there has to be a buffer.
So in that location, you could not build to zero setback?
You couldn't, you couldn't because you hadn't had the buffer.
So the need, the requirement for a buffer would take precedence over the zero setback.
For the person that lives right on Central Street, their neighbor could go right up to them. If they, you know, they're between two businesses, they could be right between the businesses. I mean, we couldn't even, we could even say things like, you have to have a setback enough to have the potential parking in the rear, so you have to have a driveway width. You know, something like that, so that, so that it, you know, that, that can, you can drive in that side of your setback. You know, that could be the driveway to the other place, to the parking and back.
He's on, he's on, as we can see, he's on big lots.
Right.
So now we're making him fifteens feet from the road and ten feet from the inside. No, I know, but it's, how you, there's not gonna be much left.
Clearly, you just buy two, you know, I mean.
One car back.
Clean it all up. You buy them and the neighbor.
What you have outlined now is, that's just a proposal.
That's based on the sidewalk that was done and also based on, um, the previous map that was presented. Um, and I guess no one would think of that, maybe some of the board members were, showed, um, division of the district between lot lines. So what we tried to do, um, was make sure that no lot was divided into two different, two different districts. So a lot is either in the district or outside of the district, it's not halfway in, halfway out.
Yeah, makes it cleaner that way.
So I'm assuming that the board's gonna make the final decision on what, what this whole thing.
And, and at the, ultimately, all property owners are gonna get a mailing.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm curious about is, can that either be decreased or increased?
Correct, yes, it can be, it's valuable.
Because actually, somebody mentioned the, the property across from the lighting plant.
Right.
And, and it's actually not in this district right now. If people want it in there, it's right on the edge, we could.
But that, that, um, the Irish store is in the district.
Right, but right now it's between them.
Because that's the property next to it is the one that they were talking, the park is empty. So you, this board will make the final decision on what the actual outline is.
Yeah, based on what people think. I mean, if, if somebody lived there and said, I don't wanna be in there, we take them out. You know, I mean, that's, that's why we're inviting it.
So if you expanded it outside of the Irish store, you took that other lot.
Yep.
That means whatever that person was gonna do there, you can't do under this new.
Sure can, and, and, I, I mean, we're not prohibiting him from building a single residence house or, or residences. I mean, it's, he could still do that.
I don't think it would be restrictive.
This is sort of expanding what people can do in this area beyond what they can do right now.
Whoever that was could still do the same.
I think so.
Whatever it is allowed, yeah, they can do that.
It would, it might even, I, I don't wanna say that it would be better for them, but right now, that piece of property is split three ways. There's some business, some general residents, and some single residents. And I think that's sort of a dilemma for him.
Well, that is a dilemma because.
It is, which dominates, we have to be ten feet from one or not the other. I mean, if we were to put it all in this, then at least you'd only have one, one zone to worry about. You know, I mean, that, not that it'd be better or worse for him, but it would simplify his task, you know?
Mark, what is that property, right, with that big empty property, right? Is it right there?
What, what exactly is that?
I don't know, I noticed it.
You know, it's got that little.
Yeah, the little red line in the middle of it. Just curious, what, what is it?
I don't know what it is, but I think there's something coming up.
It's on the other side of Franklin Street, right? So that means, so that's gonna be behind where the dentist office is?
It's behind Church Street, it's behind the funeral parlor and, and the, uh, the church, uh, no, that's not the one I'm talking about.
Talking about this right here, this property right here.
Yeah, isn't that Church Street right just north of it?
This is Franklin Street.
Yes.
Okay, this is the dentist and all, and all of that.
Oh, yeah, okay, it's behind the.
I was thinking of what individual houses, yeah.
What is it?
And I don't know. Because I was just curious, I mean, it seems like it's landlocked, so there's probably nothing.
It's got two churches right there.
So maybe there's something to be built there.
Yeah, but it'd have to be built by somebody who owns a church.
Looks like, looks like.
The town hall is in this district, right?
What's that?
Town hall is in this district.
Yes, I believe so. Yes, yes, it is.
Is the municipal light still in the district too?
Yes.
It is?
But, uh.
So that's where, so that's where the red line ends, is that, on that side of the street, is at the end of the, is, is at the municipal.
Yeah, because, pediatric.
Because right directly across is that, that property that we're talking about.
Yeah.
On, um, on Crescent.
Yes, right. Anyone, yes, ma'am.
I have a question on page seven of the proposed zoning.
Okay.
Like, one quarter of the way down are all these bullets, and I don't understand what those mean. The development shall not contain more than sixty percent residential use. What are, what are we talking about?
Square footage twice.
More than forty percent office use.
No, I mean, based on the square footage of the building, so if it was a ten thousand square foot building, you couldn't have more than six hundred square feet residential.
Well, so this is all about a ten thousand square foot building?
No, no, I'm just, if it was a hundred square feet, you could only have a hundred square feet, that's, will be way small, but, um, it goes by square footage. Sixty percent of the square footage would be residential.
Is that, does that apply to an individual building or the whole area?
Um, if you're getting a special permit.
Uh, the proposed development area, we need a definition of that. Does that mean the individual lot you're dealing with? One lot. So if you put a building in there, you're saying it's forced, it's forced to have mixed use?
No, can.
Well.
Building, you know, if somebody wants.
Shall not contain more than sixty percent residential.
Yes.
Shall not contain more than forty percent office or forty percent of retail. There's nothing, there's no use here that's listed that can be a hundred percent of the building.
Mm-hmm, it's a mixed use encouragement.
So it's.
That would change.
It's not encouraging.
That would mean you don't have single.
It's not, it's not encouraging, well, this is.
No, for a special permit.
This is.
Only in the case of a special permit.
Special permit.
But that would only be on the new construction, right?
Yes.
So that would change the use of the special permit.
That's the what?
Now they're gonna build all residential.
Um, there's certain uses that have to go for it.
Currently, they could, and then they, now they can't.
So it would change, it would change.
Would change that.
Mark, is there anything that is in the zoning bylaw now that's maybe not allowed? That in this district, this proposed village district would be allowed?
It's a good question.
The mixed use.
Yeah. Okay, so like two family homes?
No, some of it is general residence right now.
Home business, you know, you need a home occupation, you need to have a. Okay, pond complexes, that kind of stuff, okay.
Well, there are, uh, if, the question was asked earlier, what it's replacing, it's kinda like business down this end, business up that end, and general residence in the middle. So with general residence, you could have multifamily right now, you know, so, which is, I think, where you live.
Yes, uh.
Uh, general residence kinda area.
Both sides of me are originally, um, uh, multi-family. And then the one right next to me is currently also zone commercial and they have a.
So halfway, yeah.
Yeah, and they used to be, after that apartment house, then there was a doctor's office and.
Right, so I, I think it depends exactly where you are, what is allowed and not allowed, and different from what it used to be, just because we're sort of crossing a couple of.
So what would be the actual, I know, like, we have single residence, and we have general residence, and we have industrial, what exactly would this, would this area be classified?
Village zone, it would be a new village.
Village center district zone.
What is it?
Village center district zone.
Be a new thing.
Oh, I, to clar, to clarify, I'm sorry.
These things are for new uses?
Yeah, to clarify, uh, your question and an answer for that, you were looking at the use profile section. If you read the section above that, it talks about to be eligible to apply for a special permit, the site must contain at least three acres of contiguous buildable land. And so that's the special permit use, so that those rules about percentage of use.
Apply the three.
Apply for, uh, a lot that has three acres of contiguous buildable land, and I don't think there's any of that here.
Okay.
Correct. Except the mystery lot, which has, which has the mystery box in the center of it.
I was just looking on the, um, GIS, it looks like it's owned by the DCR, so now I gotta.
Oh, which, which is?
The, the little.
Greened.
Oh, really?
And it's kinda behind everywhere.
Oh, really?
What is that big lot?
DCR.
I was just looking on the GIS, the data for the GIS, it looks like it's owned by DCR. I don't know why, unless there's a well or wetland or string.
Yeah, let's build a big parking garage there. Do we have any other questions or comments?
I just wanna.
Oh, I'm sorry, in the back.
Is, is there any provision for, uh, internet or fiber optic kind of grant?
It's all up to the.
That's part of this business, this?
It's all up, up to you. If you bring in the fiber optics, we will have it.
Well, yeah, the fiber optics is there, but the expensive part is hooking it all up, so. That would, it would be.
Yeah, we will leave it to the apartment, you know, electric apartment.
Not part, yeah, it's not, it's not part of zoning, but, yeah.
It's not as part of this rule, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be a good thing to have for businesses, that's true.
So zoning, um, is there any future plans to, like, I wanna say like grandfather and residential, or like, is there a plan to upgrade it into commercial, things like that, like, do you have a future zoning plan for this? Or is it just everything stays as it is? Like, say you own a house and wanna put in a CVS pharmacy.
I'm sorry, say again?
If you have a residential piece of property.
Yeah.
And you wanna upgrade it to commercial, is there incentives in this, or is there disincentives, you know, to, to change it to be?
No, it's just it allows it.
It's allowed use, so there wouldn't be any zoning change. If, if what you were doing is allowed in the village center, then you could change the use, whereas now you'd have.
Wouldn't the residential, wouldn't be commercial, it'd be village center?
Yes, that's, that's correct. It would not be in any other zone except village centers.
Uh, yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So what you said was is that you hope to get this onto the, in your town meeting next spring.
A form that is agreed upon.
Right, so when would, when would you guys have to make a final decision on, like, what size this is gonna be and what?
When is, when is the spring town meeting?
It's in May, or in May.
In May?
Yeah, okay.
So we would.
When would you need to make a decision by, on what to put on, the, the select, what to put on?
We'd have public hearings, right?
And then, yeah, another clarification, this is not the zoning public hearing, so there's gotta be another one.
Oh, I understand, I understand that. I'm just curious of, like, what, like a timeframe.
Soon, maybe in the next couple of months.
What's that?
If you wanna have it all by the.
Yes, yes.
And so you hope to have a few more public hearings?
They have to.
Yeah.
We have to have a public hearing, this, this is not a public hearing.
Well.
Now you.
It's the workshop.
Yeah.
Cause I, I'd really like to see, you know, if you could look into maybe, maybe enlarging this a little bit.
The zone?
Yeah.
No.
Just make it bigger?
No. Well, that, that's kinda why we're having all the people to, especially on Crescent Street, you know, to include that one piece of property. So, we, I'd, I'd like to have the owner weighing on that with emails, you know, but, I mean, it seems like it would be more ben, it would be beneficial to him. Well, it would simplify his task, I don't know if it'd be better or worse.
It might be that three acre lot, it would be strictly.
Backwards.
Yeah, I think we have to start somewhere, and then, you know, if there is an interest, we could increase down the road.
And obviously, right, obviously, the border that we put in for this district, of course, could be changed in the future.
In the future.
Yeah.
Is there any place that's already done what we're thinking of doing?
Hudson.
That has.
Our, that's our size. Hudson is.
But Hudson's right on the street, Hudson's over there.
Hudson's huge compared to this, yeah.
Well, there's, there are six towns that are working on doing this right now.
Anya's size.
Auburn's one.
It's, it's, it's a, kind of a new movement.
Nothing is like our town, so.
Yeah, we're talking six thousand residents, anything, anybody, six, seven thousand residents. Town this size, anybody that's looking at it now?
Um, I don't know all the population sizes off the top of my head, but there's Auburn, there's Westbrookfield. Westbrookfield is six thousand.
I think already has it missing.
They are.
They have old buildings.
Holden, Holden's bigger.
Holden?
Hookdale.
That's interesting, yeah.
Hookdale.
Hookdale.
Upton.
See, I think that, this is just a, a suggestion, I think that once you can define, you know, like, say, like, Mr. Rujio just said, you know, maybe get a town that's similar in size to us, I think it would be advantageous for the board to go and kind of visit. You know, and see exactly, so, and then come back and give us feedback, you know, I mean, that, that's just a suggestion.
They could be a lot smaller too, their, their village areas could be a lot smaller area than this.
Westbrook, Westbrookfield might be.
Just to get an ideal, in, in a.
And Holden, of course, they have all the development in their center of town, as opposed to us, we have our, most of our development down Route twelve. And we're trying to preserve, you know, this area from not being like that.
And Holden, we did everything a couple of years ago, they put all, put all the utilities underground, everything, they spent beaucoup bucks.
Underground, yeah.
Yeah.
The, uh, if, in, in, uh, if you're talking about trying to find town the same size who's already put the zoning in place for their village district, and develop, and their village district has developed because of their zoning, I don't think.
If that exists.
I don't think you're gonna.
That doesn't exist, this is a new movement.
Yeah. But, but, but in, in those pictures of other zones, or other villages, I think the closest we're gonna get is the one, there was a picture of Worcester, up the street from Newton, uh, Newton Square, which is sort of a corner, that's not really near anything else, it's not, it's not.
Towards the airport? Was that where?
It's kind of away.
Away to the airport, right?
Yeah. Pleasant Street or something like that.
Oh, Kelly Square.
So that's, the Pleasant Street, I mean, it's sort of a, a little island in the middle of a huge residential area, and I think that's what this would be like. You know, you're not right on top of the bank, you're not halfway down Route twelve near Walmart, you're sort of your own little isolated spot that could develop into something nice, I mean, like, uh, that's got a coffee shop, it's got the lunch shop across the way, I think there's an insurance agent around the corner, I mean, it's sort of a, that, that, I think, is the closest to what we're gonna end up with.
So why not just put sidewalks on both sides of Route twelve and just make that the center? You can walk to everything.
That's what.
Cause you'll get run over.
Again, you know, again, we do need the money.
I, I'm toying with that kind of a thought myself, because we have residential areas and we have business areas. And why not build up the business areas and not try to bring businesses into the residential area? It almost makes more sense to have a historic district in the center of town, rather than a village where you're trying to bring businesses in.
Well, I think the answer.
I'm, I'm missing a point, it's so weird here.
But, but the, the sort of subtlety there is, the reason we're doing this is not because we're trying to change anything, because it's already there.
Right.
Like, like Darby's is there, I mean, we're not trying to do it, it's, we're trying to cover what was going on, and if people don't like that sort of thing, we should actually sort of weed it out and make it more just residential, but if people sort of like that, sort of Darby's in the middle of your neighborhood.
No, it's fine, but it seems to me like you open it up to more.
So maybe take certain areas and, uh, make them the village district, instead of one big area like this.
One big area.
Take the dirt, Darby area, and maybe make that an area.
Well, that's kinda what we have right now, we have business down here, business up here, and residential in the middle, is, but the problem that we actually discovered when we did our walk around is, there's, in the residential area is where the, uh, that the, next to the library, there's that art studio, that's actually residential. Half of the, the old post office, which is now the, the kitchen shop or whatever it is, is half in the resident, general residence. You know, we're, like, your house where there's the, 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 I think next door to you is, uh, uh, in-house business, I mean, permanent, but it's in general residence.
Right, yeah. Right. But it's not across the street from me, so how come all of that is included?
Well, you're on, you're, you're on, uh.
See something new, doesn't it?
You're new, the only thing on Newman Street is the library and then the, the place right behind the library. If you, I mean, this is the time to bring up.
The place behind the library is residence.
It is right now, but it's in the zone, if we don't want it to ever develop, we can take it out of the zone today, I mean, or, or whatever, we haven't, we haven't finalized that border.
But then you're inciting businesses into a residential area by doing that.
Right, but not very far into there.
I also, I also think if you put nice big sidewalks all the way down Route twelve, all the way to the Worcester line, it's not gonna make that area particularly walkable.
No, no.
There, there, there are, and nobody's gonna walk down Route twelve, I mean, they do now, of course.
That's what Holden does. In Holden, you go up from Chaffins and walk all the way up to the center of town and walk all the way down.
And nobody does that.
I've lived in Holden forty-seven years.
Did you ever do it? Nobody ever does that, it's too wide. If you wanna make a small community that people, people can walk by, like, like, you know, they do in Italy, and they walk by, and they have little, you know, ice cream or whatever they have. They can have a little community there.
Actually, I think the property you're talking about is unique, because it goes from Newton all the way, all the way across the property, so we were trying to let them develop the other edge.
Yeah.
You know, and, and that's why that property's in, is in there, cause right now, we'd have to go behind the library and be right on Central Street, and then, you know, uh, between that property and the art studio.
Yes, it makes sense that, that, that property is used for something that's obvious, that, that it's, there probably be future plans for that property, but I just don't wanna see the little shopping mall there.
No, I think the future place for the property is the parking lot of the library.
That's what I always wanted, thought it was.
And that's my, that's my.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make a point on the art studio, that, that was actually a town school, that's the Murdoch School.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. I mean, and, and that, uh, the, the discovery that when we're walking around, that that's in, right now, general residence, is kinda why we made the zone this shape. If we wanna change it, I mean, that's, that's the point of these meetings, you know.
But if, if you were in town enough years, you know that Bee Lions used to have her little thread and needle place right next door in one of those Victorian houses, and everybody went to Bee's.
Yeah, the studio. Went to the studio.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
And it always was a little business, but it didn't make it non-residential, it just was a little business.
Okay. But your point, you're, you're, you're proving our point, is that people who live there wanna have their business, and right now, we're making it just an as of right thing, you're, you're there, you can have your business, and you can live there, and that's just what we're, we were sort of discovering that that was going on, and instead of making you go to zoning and get the residence, uh, of, of, of business in your residence.
I think doing it on a one by one instance with people through the zoning board makes more sense to me financially than trying to create a whole big huge, um, village district and try to do it all at once, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yes, sir. Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, um, you've already identified that as part of this process, you will have to have public hearing.
Yes.
And you mentioned that there would be a mailing to residents. My only point would be, let's make sure that anyone that might be affected as a resident.
Yeah, you put a buffer.
Get the mailings first before you have the public hearing, so that they, you know, will come to it, instead of saying, oh, you had a public hearing, it would've been nice if you let us know.
Oh, that's the process, there's, it's called the butters notification before this kind of thing goes on.
Right.
And the software, the, yeah, the software finds all the butters as far as you wanna go in, away from your property. You'd say the butters within five hundred feet, a hundred feet, ten feet, you know, and it gives you this monster list to mail it to everybody.
Right.
So Elizabeth, would you envision another workshop, or you think this is probably it for workshops?
We have time for another workshop.
You think that would be valuable?
We need to do, we need to do a workshop where we talk about the boundary, um, because we need to know who we're gonna do the mailing to.
Okay.
Well, you also talked about lowering the height, that's definitely.
We talked about lowering the height, and we have concern about process of the street setbacks, yeah, yeah.
Can I just make one point, that several people have spoken knowingly about the European villages, of which you might be able to tell from my accent to have a certain familiarity.
Oh.
The big thing there is traffic, you know, you walk around, whether it's a tiny little place like San Gignano or somewhere like Florence, the absence of traffic that makes it walkable and nice. I think that addressing the traffic issues in this is gonna be a key to success of.
And keep, yes, and keeping in mind that we do have two state routes coming right through the center of town, and.
So that's gonna limit a lot of likely.
On those particular streets, but.
Those are very narrow streets.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so, those, those, those streets were built without traffic, they were built for people who walk or ride horses or cars.
I, yes, I understand that, that's true, that's the difference, sir, in the back?
Yes, thank you, um, harm was bitten, I just like to know when the next workshop is going to be, I was unaware that there were a series of workshops. And it was only posted on the town website at moontime yesterday.
I under, I, I understand, yes.
And I would like to, I think a lot of people.
Yeah, I think we're gonna advertise on the electronic sign, we're gonna put it in the newspaper.
There was, there was a press release, but I didn't see the item.
It did, it made it onto the website, it didn't make it into the paper.
Okay.
So, for the next one.
When do you think that will be?
Can we do September eighteenth? Tuesday.
If you'd like to know, you know, maybe, have you signed in?
I did.
Okay, so, maybe we'll, uh, is that an email address? We could send you an email.
You could send it.
That's nice.
I would send an email.
Right, negative.
I would send an email.
September eighteenth, Mark?
I am a whore, I have a meeting.
That, no, we're, we're planning on having a, uh.
How about the nineteenth?
We're planning on having a, um.
We do have some other things.
A public hearing for adult use marijuana that week. So we would like, we'd like to stay away from that week. Yeah, that's true, they are related.
How about September?
Can we make it October sometime?
No, it's too late.
Too late?
Yeah, we have to be aggressive.
How about the first, how about the first weekend October, how about like October first or October second?
I can't make it on Tuesdays, but.
Don't put it on Wednesday.
And then you're talking about October first?
Tuesdays.
We do, we do have some time here, but, yes, I understand, earlier is better than later. Does that, does that give us time to advertise in the proper places and get word out?
Fourteen days.
What's that?
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days.
You're not talking about the public hearing, you're talking about another workshop.
Another workshop, another workshop.
What about October first?
What day is that?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, October first?
Yeah.
What time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, Mark.
Yeah. We'll get here at seven fifty.
No, it's six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
October, Monday, October first at seven o'clock.
Yep, so, come bring your friends. Any other, any other questions or things we'd like to discuss tonight, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm wondering if the planning board can tell us, um, ch, how much changing this zoning, which will mean much denser development in this area, both residential and commercial, how much will that cost the town, um, in additional services? Because the planning board, um, I believe it's in the town's master plan, and it's in the town's open space and rec plan. Page fifty-two says, residential development typically incurs a net fiscal cost to the town. Commercial development typically generates a net fiscal surplus, but attracts more residential development. In other words, residential development usually does not pay for itself.
Uh, yes, that's true.
Property taxes they yield to the town do not cover the cost of the town's services required.
And a lot of it depends on whether there are children who attend the schools.
Right, right, so I'm wondering, by increasing the density here, what are the costs going to be to the town?
Sort of hard to say.
You have to do a study, it would probably be about ten thousand dollars to, to figure that out, I know a field op study.
And I think everybody thinks increasing housing brings the town more property taxes, but they don't seem to realize.
It does not, it doesn't.
No.
No, it costs the town.
Brings the town more costs than revenue.
That's true. No, that's true, that's proven.
And so it'd be interesting to see what this change, uh, would do in the, in town, in regard to the cost to the town.
Considering the changes would be happening over a longer period of time.
Right, it's hard.
And considering, we don't know the exact mix of things that come in, uh, hopefully, these businesses might attract people from Worcester or from out of town, uh, not necessarily people.
Yes.
Well, yes, that's true, yes.
So for that reason, I, I do not support expanding the district.
Expanding it.
I do not support expanding the district. One person wanted to expand.
Expanding it beyond the red line?
Right.
Or establishing it at all?
What?
You're against, you're.
I'm against making it any bigger than what's proposed.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It, it would be, it would be interesting to know, within the area that you're proposing, what's the current percentage of residential versus commercial?
It's both, just from looking at the, the graphic on the GIS, it looked like, like thirty percent, it's like, this half is, uh, business, that half is business, and the chunk in the middle, kind of where it necks down over, it's like twenty-five, thirty percent, I mean.
Thirty percent residential, you say?
It's general residence, it's business, general residence, business.
You're talking, you're talking zones, the actual zones that are, no, the actual, the actual use.
Oh, actually, ninety-five percent residential.
That whole area?
Oh, the whole area.
That's what he's saying, not, not how it's zoned, what's currently the area.
Until the things change, it, it is a residential area, it looks like to me.
Well, it is.
Predominantly.
Mostly.
I don't know, but you, I don't know, I didn't go that far.
Except the harmony businesses we have, we don't have so many businesses.
A lot of those buildings have businesses in them.
Yeah, I mean.
If you look at, all the way down, uh.
Like, like if you were to look down here.
West Borough Street.
Like these, this is mostly, this is all business, all the way down here, business, residential kind of out back here with some businesses over here. Uh, kind of business, residential, residential, residential.
Oh, good.
Mixed here, you know, there's some businesses in the houses, but this is, this is pretty residential, but this is all business, all business right here.
Okay.
Residential on that edge, I think there's an inn over here and a.
Well, all the way up to the right.
Well, that's the town.
There's Reservoir Garage and.
Here, a little residential. Like, well, let's see, where's the town hall, it's right here, there's residential, there's, where's the mall? Like the post office mall was over here somewhere.
Down, further down that way.
It's outside.
So it's balanced?
It's balanced, it's balanced now, there's some, there's some buildings all business, some buildings all residential, and some are mixed.
Yeah. Business, business, business.
Yeah.
Business, business, business.
Somebody can do some homework and count them out.
Residential, residential, residential.
Yes, ma'am.
Residential, business.
So, quick question, if people are zoning, and they, do they have to like to vote, if they agree or disagree or voting to be?
The town, the town votes.
The town vote.
It's a town meeting.
It's a town meeting, there, there would be a warrant article, and the wording would be available to everyone, and the whole town votes on it. And so, no, there wouldn't be a special vote for the people in the, in the district.
And, and zoning articles are very, the, the state set it all up to be so that there has to actually be, is it sixty or just a two-thirds, sixty-six percent have to approve it, so it's not, it's actually difficult to change zoning just for this reason, so nobody gets surprised, you know?
Is it possible that they could get, put what's business and what's residential in this map for future workshops?
That's Mark is going to do it.
I'm not gonna do it.
They're saying, they're saying yes.
We're gonna put the zoning.
Both the zoning and the actual.
Be good, it'd be good to see the zoning on it, to see the effect of what zone are you coming from, and what zone, you know, and you're going to this zone.
Zoning versus use?
And then use also, is that, would you have the data about use?
We have the data, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, two, two extra things, the actual use of each property and the lines of existing zones.
Yeah.
Okay, I thank everyone for coming, and thank, thank you for your input and your questions and your comments, silver. There isn't, is upstairs bigger than this?
If they were like, somebody, yeah, yeah, block the.
It would be, it would be close to the name of the school.
Is it more capacity upstairs? I guess there is.
Is that where you have your meeting to be on the school or?
Town meeting, we have, oh, we have town meeting at the school in the auditorium, cause there's hundreds, hundreds of people.
Yeah.
For this kind of a workshop.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You know where I live, right?
I guess so.
Right.
I guess so.
Good match for you.
I have the house in the Gambrel.
It's good, it's good.
Right, the thing you may not know, which is, it's a real old house, I was surprised that there is like a garage